Okay, let me call to order the regular meeting of the Daly City Council this Monday, July 8th. Could we all please rise and say our pledge to the flag?
My pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to a republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
All right, all accounted for. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting of June 24th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, that means this is approved. Approval. Can I get a motion to approve the general agenda?
Motion to approve the general agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, that's approved. The consent agenda, or any items on the consent agenda are requesting to be pulled. If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no objection, the consent is approved.
Now, let's go on to public hearings. Item number five, which is the Public Hearing on National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Local Stormwater Program Regulatory Fee. Mr. Chu, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is the yearly approval request for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System fees, NPDES fees. This is a yearly request, and the request is for council to approve the fees and then authorize the collection of the fees through the county tax roll records. This fee is used to fund local stormwater program activities. The Daly City, as well as other cities in the Bay Area, fall under the municipal regional permit, which is issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we have local program activities that we need to implement for the stormwater program. This fee generates approximately $465,000 currently, and our estimated field maintenance cost for maintaining these structures that we installed for storm drain, trash capture devices, as well as cleaning Vista Grande Canal and other miscellaneous items for stormwater, we estimate to cost about $514,000. The new requirements coming up for additional green infrastructure will create additional maintenance requirements for the city. It's not something that we need to do within the next, you know, three years or so, but in the near future, we will need to install more green infrastructure-type projects within our city right-of-way, and as a result of that, it's very likely that this fee would need to have an increase to that. But for the time being, staff is recommending approval of the fees as is. These fees have not changed for many years, and staff is recommending that it be approved and that the city manager be authorized to execute an agreement with the county for the county to collect the fees. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let me open the public hearing at this time. I don't have any speaker cards. Any comments from council? Questions? No? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
May I second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, do I need to wait? No, okay. So let me go to the recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Now, let's go on to communications. Item number six, which is the resolution for support for the commercial development of the state-owned land under the control of the IA District Agricultural Association, the Cow Palace parcel. Ms. Zimmerman or Ms. Maupay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Good evening. This item on the agenda includes a memorandum of information from the city attorney's office regarding the consideration of a proposed resolution of support for the commercial development of the state property known as the Cow Palace. The draft resolution summarizes support for DECA Capital as a developer of a project developing a significant portion of the Cow Palace property. Attached four-year reference is the Cow Palace Board Resolution as approved on June 18th, 2019. At the direction of the mayor, through the city manager's office, attached is a draft resolution of support for council determination and discussion. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Let me open the discussion. Any comments? I know Mr. Sylvester had a comment.
No, I didn't. I'm good.
No?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'm fine.
You're fine?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I do have a clarification question, and I think the vice mayor asked earlier.
Which one?
Is it clarified? We're on the Cow Palace, vice mayor. So, for instance, since it's an agricultural district, and please educate me on it. So if we do have retail sales that occur within that zoning, does it go to the state or do us as the city of Daly City get a portion of that? I think that's...
So just point of clarification, the agricultural district owns the land, which is state-owned property. The lease portion of it, which is what was resolved in their resolution, would mean that the development of it, lease proceeds, would go directly to the agricultural district. If they were to have commercial or sales or anything like that, that's just regular sales tax that would go for the city of Daly City, just like any commercial retail property. But the lease proceeds for leasehold interest would go directly to the agricultural district as the owner.
The leasehold interest.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done?
No, go ahead. I'm still trying to bring it up on the screen.
All right.
I'm used to paper, you know.
Okay.
It's okay.
Does somebody else have a comment?
No. We can wait for you because we have a speaker card, if you'd like. So I have a sunny kinnikini on the speaker on this item. Mr. Kinnikini?
Yes.
Good evening.
Yes, Mayor.
You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Honorable counsel, the Franciscan Park is very close to the subject at issue today, and that's why we are here. And we want to be sure that the same mistakes that happened at the park as in affordable housing does not happen with any affordable housing tied up with the Cow Palace. I want to share with you that tonight, at least 101 low-income elderly residents of the park will not have enough sleep, simply because National Cooperative Bank has sent everybody a threatening letter collecting 2,500 from everyone in the park to be a member of a supposed-to-be fraudulent cooperative group. This is a letter that I sent to every homeowner, and I want to share this with you. Please help us stop the unlawful collection of 2,500 from our elderly and low-income homeowners in exchange for an empty promise the Franciscan Housing Corporation will own the park, and I think we all agree on that. A co-op will not own the park. Therefore, what these folks are doing is collecting money from all of us, especially the elderly, for nothing in exchange. It is a scam. Now, what are we doing in the park? I've appointed an executive board to investigate this, but I am asking your help. Please stop this fraudulent activity in the park, and I'm appealing to Attorney Rose Zimmerman, the whole council. Please help us stop this. It's unlawful, it's a violation of the regulatory agreement, and it's a violation of the court order to transfer the park to FFC. These shenanigans are trying to transfer it to a co-op. It has no permission from the city.
Mr. Kinnikini, we need you to wrap it up.
No permission from the owners, Link Housing, and no permission from me as a plaintiff in the class option suit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnikini.
We expect that you will undertake some investigation on this, and I'll be available to meet with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnikini. I don't have any other speaker cards on this item. Any other questions or... Oh, I'm sorry. One more.
Do you have any?
Two more. All right, thank you. Okay, Daniel Sacks, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Daniel Sacks at DECA, the company of which this resolution is focused. I first wanted to say thank you for having me on the agenda, and I wanted to ask for your support in passing the resolution. We have worked with you, as well as the Cow Palace, quite a bit over the last six to nine months to put together a plan that we think is exciting, interesting, sensitive to the needs of the community, and to work on creating this opportunity to get the Cow Palace activated and developed for the first time. And we've worked quite closely with Joe Barquette and the Cow Palace in organizing the resolution, which was passed by them. Their intention is wholly to make the site active and available and good and...
I think she's fixing. Sorry.
And to organize it for the benefit of the Cow Palace and the city, the community, as well as all the other parties that will be involved. We think it's an extraordinary opportunity. We want to work in partnership and in coordination with the city and the community. We've already spent some time with some of the folks in the Bay Shore community. There are many others that we will spend time with and work with. You know, I want to say we're at the beginning of a long road in putting this project together. It is a legacy project for everyone involved. Our intention is to create something that can be remembered by the city for everyone to be proud of for generations to come. Our organization is organized to develop and hold real estate for the very long term. So we build these projects, we design, and we build these projects with that kind of legacy orientation in mind. We've been quite coordinated with the Cow Palace already and plan to continue to be. They've expressed a strong interest in doing this project with us, and we are enthusiastic to work on it. With your support, we'll be enabled and empowered to do that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Let me call up Bill Viera.
Hello, good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. Thank you.
Of course.
You know, when it comes to development in this area, we think that the city and Cy West both share a very long-term perspective as it relates to the land. We have a good relationship with the Cow Palace, and we've had one with them for many, many years. A little bit about our company in particular, we've invested in this community for a long time. We've owned this real estate since, I think it was the mid-'80s. We retain all of our assets personally. We don't partner with anybody, and we don't need to borrow money in order to affect our developments. We build them ourselves. We develop and we own, and we own approximately 1,000 residential units today, about 4.5 million square feet of retail space in addition to office buildings and industrial buildings. And again, we self-develop, we self-manage, and we are committed to a legacy style of operation on all of our assets. We remain committed to the master planning process on this property, and we offer, we believe, the highest degree of likelihood for success in that we already own 1/3 of the land, and we reached an agreement with the Cow Palace on terms for ground leasing. Our approach is immediate and it's straightforward. We envision that the implementation of the master plan is really the first phase of a project, and again, it offers the highest degree for deliverability of a mixed-use and affordable and market-rate housing. We are committed to the neighborhood-serving retail component. That's really one of our strong suits, and we believe it will be a catalyst for future development projects in the area as well. I think a master plan on this part of the site would organize the property and clusters of housing and leave those development pods and modules available for different types of housing product built by different developers and operators of the affordable housing and market-rate housing as well. And again, we know the site very well, and we know the operating nuances of being next to the Cow Palace, which is very unique. What our proposal would not do is it doesn't preclude future development or further densification of the Cow Palace site at a later date should ourselves or another developer or the Cow Palace or the city choose to become involved in another subsequent product. It would bolt essentially right up to what we were proposing to do. We ask that as the adjacent owner, that any city resolution be changed to simply support the redevelopment efforts of the Cow Palace and not preordain any one entity from being the developer.
Okay, I need you to wrap up.
Thank you. And then also, I might add or interject here that it could, in one essence, pollute the process of fair dealings with regard to your first endeavor of an RFP, should you choose to designate a single developer tonight. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards on this issue. Any comments or questions? You have your...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Manalo alluded to one of my points I brought up earlier, which was directed to the city attorney in regards to leasehold versus retail. I'm looking at item number three on this resolution, and part of it says, "See, the development provides for and is consistent with the preservation and enhancement of the Cow Palace arena and exhibit buildings." My problem there is if there is any sort of resolution or law passed, whether the governor decides to give up the land, would we be obligated to still comply, or does the state resolution, if any, should come up, take precedence over these conditions, this resolution?
Just, Vice Mayor, point of clarification, because the attachment has two attachments. One is the approved resolution of the Cow Palace, which is attachment one, and one is the attachment two, which is the draft resolution that was prepared for the council consideration. So the council consideration resolution does not have any discussion about the preservation of, in regards to your question, the preservation of the... But I see what you're saying in terms of the assumptions that were formulated in the Cow Palace-approved resolution.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Then, that brings me to what is defined as adequate parking for events? Can the Cow Palace just say, "Well, we're not going to use 57.6 acres at any time," whether it be for development or anything, "that we have to abide by that because that's their resolution?"
Well, in your draft resolution for consideration, it's wrapped in such a way for the council, it's pretty open-ended. It doesn't have a definition of adequate parking. So it's your support in terms of the development and what the support for the developer at hand would propose on the Cow Palace.
All right. The reason why I brought that up, because I know the Cow Palace leases particular spots to include, I think we had something appear before the council, I believe it was a car rental where they'll store the cars. So that's their decision to make, and that's entirely up to them. All the money goes to the agricultural district 1A, but I don't want it to be a hindrance. They, "Oh, no, we're not going to give up any part of that, even if you do want to develop. We're not going to let you put a street there." That's a concern I have with this resolution. My last comment in the first part of this resolution, earlier today in our study session, we have decided to move with a targeted request. This resolution is giving one particular developer exclusive negotiation. Basically, they're going to work with this developer, and I said I want it to be fair. If we move to a targeted request and we approve this resolution, well, they seem to conflict with each other. And, you know, unless the language has changed, I'm having problems with that. Your thoughts, Madam City Attorney?
Again, the draft resolution is, as it was proposed, you're correct. It does favor one developer for the development of the Cow Palace, as the overall resolution does encompass a support of the city council for commercial development at the Cow Palace. And so I can discuss how council would like in terms of changing it. This is exactly how it was presented to us for consideration of the council, but I did include the boards, the Cow Palace Board's resolution as an attachment, and you will see in the resolve, it does include both Cy West properties and DECA as a support for development of the Cow Palace.
Yeah, I think the language in the resolution is indicated that is a potential developer. So it's under item number five. Comments? Go ahead.
And then, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But then in item number six, when Vice Mayor spoke about that, it says further affirms its strong support for DECA as a developer for this project.
Yeah.
Has that conflicted, Vice Mayor? Is that, as you were speaking, referring to?
Well, I'm no attorney, but from what I read here, it's, I think it goes against our targeted request, and it's favoring, as a speaker said, and I wrote it down, no preordained developer.
I agree with you.
Well, okay, so if you want to, I like the agenda, or I'm sorry, I like the resolution as written. I think it's a good resolution. I think it's all about trying to move things forward, and it doesn't go against what the Cow Palace is trying to do. It supports what the Cow Palace is trying to do. I think we all need to continue to work together, and if the Cow Palace is in agreement, they have obviously studied this issue, I think we all need to work together, adopt similar kind of resolution. But, you know...
This actually is a question directed for the city attorney. Since we did get direction to have a targeted RFP, and we provide a list of developers for the council to consider at a subsequent study session, should we not enter an agreement into an agreement with DECA with this resolution cause liability issues for the city?
This resolution is specifically for the development of the Cow Palace in support of DECA. I can't say for certain, you know, in terms of liability, I can't speak to that, but yes, there are some concerns about preordaining when you are looking at how you want to craft your targeted RFP, which may or may not include a master planning. You know, I can't say for certain how that would look, but again, this is a support of one developer for a development of commercial, which I think is the intent of the council here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I definitely approve this resolution, but with some changes in it, so that our city would not be liable as a result of a conflict of interest. I would remove the developer because we decided earlier for a targeted approach, and that doesn't mean that DECA can still apply DIA, this targeted approach that we will be taking, but at least it would be clean and it would show complete transparency and offer other developers an opportunity as well.
Well, go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll follow after you. Okay. So this resolution is, it comes from the resolution that the Cow Palace had passed. The Cow Palace did pass the resolution that's attached. I mean, we have our own here, but the Cow Palace passed a resolution on June 19, 19?
18.
June 18. Okay. Okay. So Cow Palace also sees the entity mentioned as a developer that they are looking towards working with.
Right. So the Cow Palace resolution supports long-term lease agreement with Cy West on the upper parking lot and resolves DECA companies to enter into a and/or enter into a long-term lease agreement for a portion of the Cow Palace, which needs to be determined. There isn't anything specific about it. Part of the resolution includes that I think the intent of the Cow Palace is that there is a coordinated effort with the city of Daly City for whatever development that they propose. The resolution before you is also supporting commercial development at the Cow Palace, but it does specifically support DECA's development and further agreement with the Cow Palace. It does not support Cy West.
Yeah. Again, I want to emphasize to the council, you know, we were talking about how we want to work together and try to reach sort of a master plan about developing this whole community, if you will. And we have one player in this greater scheme who has decided as a board to select DECA. And for us to get in their way and saying, "No, that's not good enough," I think is not a role that we need to play. If anything, I think we need to be supportive of each other and trying to come together and support this, because we're gonna, if we're, if the whole idea is to develop a master plan where we're all working together to try to build this community, I don't think it's helpful to say no to something they've decided. We got to work together, and I think that runs counter to what will be in the best interests of the Bay Shore community. And so I hope that we can come together in this and not delete or change their own sort of language and their own intent in the resolution they passed. For us to do that is not productive, and it is counter to what we're trying to do as a council. So if there's no further discussion, I'm going to make the motion to pass the resolution as is. Any further discussion? Is there a second?
Second with...
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if there's any way to, I know it talks about commercial buildings, et cetera, but is there any way to just note, and this is just a suggestion because there's a master plan, but to also include hotel, possibility hotel?
Sure. That's a good idea.
So, within this resolution.
All right. Let's amend the resolution to reflect that, unless anyone has any objection. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering what precipitated this, bringing this before and accepting the Cow Palace's resolution and thus subsequently rewording it to apply to Daly City. And honestly speaking, I think what precipitated this was a recent bill by Senator Scott Wiener, which contained two parts. One was gun violence and one was possibility of moving the land over. We are not saying that we disagree with the resolution, but what we are saying is that to ensure fairness for a targeted proposal of developers to come in, I'm wondering, how did the board of the Cow Palace come to their... I'm wondering, how did the board of the Cow Palace come to their final decision? Did they interview other developers? I don't want to stand in the way of that, but to include full and complete transparency, I believe, is the key.
I think my, my thought on that, Mr. Vice Mayor, is that we are, we should allow them to govern themselves. They are their own board. They decide what they want to do. And for us to question their board activity would, I certainly wouldn't want them to, to intrude on our governance. And I think that if they have made, I think there's something like, how many board members there are at the Cow Palace Board? Nine? Eight? Something like that. If they've made the determination based on their own action, that they passed this resolution, we can't, we, I don't think we should have oversight over them. We should respect their independence. Although I appreciate your need and request to learn about the deliberation process and the investigation on what they may or may not have done. The fact is, they made a decision, and I think we should respect their decision. That's my, my take.
All right. One last question for the City Attorney. As we move forward for the targeted request, if another developer is chosen, will we have a problem?
Okay, so again, Mr. Vice Mayor, the targeted request is in relation to the request for proposals for our parcel. And I know that the, for our parcel, and I know that the overall intent of the council is to have a coordinated effort with the Cow Palace, which is entirely clear in the support of the board resolution at the Cow Palace. So, I, I don't believe, if you're asking the legal question as whether or not, but, you know, just for point of clarification, I mean, the board resolution of the Cow Palace does include the SiWest, support of SiWest and DECA. So, you know, and I, I just wanted to be clear, and I don't want to create any confusion for the council. The drafted resolution is for support of DECA.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment.
Yes.
Madam City Attorney, thank you so much for the class, the clarification. I think what I was missing the point, and you said the magic words, "our parcel." This is not our parcel. This is the Cow Palace. So, you know, I have to acquiesce and move the other direction. If it was pertaining to our parcel solely, then I think we would have a horse in the race.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, so we have a motion. Who, did we have a second?
A second by Councilmember Manalo.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
To include the hotel.
To include the hotel, correct. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Boynton Ventura?
Aye. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Let me go on to public appearances, oral communications. I have three speaker cards. The first one is Robert Greco. Mr. Greco? I think he might have left, actually. Marian Mann. Ms. Mann?
I didn't leave.
Thank you for staying.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council people. The 26th Annual Fund Day is coming up on March, I mean, August? Seven. I'm okay. Last year, we had approximately 550 participants of people who have disabilities of various kinds, and we had 250 volunteers and 157 staff. So, we are also, of course, this is a classic bowl in Daly City, and we are looking for helpers, because sometimes people with disabilities need a little help one-on-one. So, if anyone is interested, they can contact me by email, M A N N 98 at AOL dot com, and we would love to have them become part of our volunteers. And of course, we do expect, we've had okays from the police and fire from several communities, that they will be attending as well. So, the opening ceremonies will be around 10:30-ish. So, if the mayor could possibly be at that time, as usual, we really would appreciate it. As most of you know, Fund Day is an incredible event. It's just, you know. Thank you.
Great work. Thank you, Marian. Okay, we have Joanna Fala.
Evening. Good evening. So, my name's Joanna, and I come to you as a member of environmental profit, fossil-free buildings in Silicon Valley, but mostly the person concerned about Silicon Valley is perceived apathy towards our changing climate. As I'm sure you're all aware, we're in the middle of a climate crisis. CO2 levels have reached the highest they've ever been in human history, and it's easy to imagine that this climate crisis is a faraway problem that doesn't affect us, but it's not. Last year's record-setting wildfires in California were linked in part to increasing temperatures and prolonged dry periods. Severe air quality issues affected many aspects of daily life. More than a million public school students were out of school due to the fires, including Beishore Elementary. Forest fires are just a start. California's major droughts, global temperature rise, warming oceans, global sea level rise, shrinking ice sheets will all have drastic effects at a local and global level. And I don't mean to be harsh, but Daly City is lagging behind in the efforts from the rest of Silicon Valley. But the adoption of REACH codes can start as soon as you're ready to take on this challenge. I won't take the time to highlight the importance of adopting building REACH codes. REACH codes enable all-electric, carbon-free buildings that make our buildings safer, healthier, and more affordable, as well as help meet local climate plan action goals. It will also defend the city against costly and uncertain supplies of natural gas and make Daly City a leader for cities throughout the U.S. As of right now, more than 15 cities are working with Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and technical consultants to develop REACH codes in time to sync up with the new statewide Title 24 standards that will go into effect January 1st, 2020. I hope that Daly City's representative for Peninsula Clean Energy, Roderick Douse-Magboal, will continue to show leadership and help bring the city to a greener future. Here I have a couple of fact sheets for all-electric housing, especially for multifamily housing, which is really important to all of Silicon Valley. And I also invite you to come to an all-electric house later in Palo Alto. It just celebrated giving away 100,000 miles' worth of clean gas for free. Thank you for listening.
How do you, what runs the electric, I mean, is it a battery? What is it? You said an all-electric house.
Yeah, so it's through, it's battery-powered, and that is paid through your electric bill. And so, the guy who does it, it's just someone's house, and he just has an electric station outside his house, and he gives away gas, or electric miles for free. And he did 100,000 of them, so that was pretty cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a comment?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I, I used to be part of that committee for Peninsula Clean Energy, and it was definitely great to be a part, especially in the area of reducing CO2 and greenhouse gases. I like what Peninsula Clean Energy has been doing. I would hope that you appearing here today serves as a reminder. So many times I have asked folks to sign up and move over and keep up the great work, and thank you so much, and for Dr. Rod Dasmagboal, who's our representative, he feels the same way. I think we screwed it up for the young kids, but we're, we're going to make up for it. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Those are all the speaker cards I have, so let's go on to Boards, Commission, any, any appointments? Hearing none. Let me go on to number seven, Council Committee. Let me go to Council Committee Reports. Any Council Committee Reports? Council Committee Meetings, June 24th to July 7th.
One, one specifically came to my mind. I've attended quite a few. But I think something that's going to affect Daly City is when I attended the Office of Emergency Services. And what's going to happen, and I'm sure that most of you have heard about it, PG&E will start enacting a power shut-off. And there are circumstances where they will shut off power, if humidity is one, and not just up north, but it's going to happen here in Daly City. So, something to think about, so I'll keep you posted as I hear more. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any others? No?
We had our annual North County Fire
Oh, yeah.
meeting with Vice Mayor. That was this past, in the past two weeks.
That's it?
Yeah, I mean, it was the annual meeting. What occurred at that meeting was, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I remember, that you commented that we should actually be meeting more so than once a year. And so, that was what happened at that meeting. And also, just that we needed an update on statistics that we received that was not in the report as far as call times, but we received that recently. But that wasn't included in the report this year, and so that was a question that I had, and hopefully that was noted, but we did get information.
You did?
And so, is there anything other that I missed, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, Madam Manalo, you definitely covered the bases, and that was an excellent question that you brought up, and that was, was there any change in response times, because it was left out of the brochure? And Madam Manalo, I got it. Thank you so much. And of course, we approved the budget allocation for Brisbane, Daly City, and Pacifica, right?
That's right. You've been asking for the cost allocations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other Council Committee Meetings? No? How about City Council Report? Go ahead.
Well, we're all there.
Where?
Where?
Dr. Rob was with his daughter, but we went to July 3rd, our celebration for, at our Dolger Center.
Oh, yeah.
On July 4th, our city manager and, and our city attorney and Tatum and, and other people came. So, we had a great time. Elvis showed up. He had a little, I think his windshield got broken, but he made it anyway. So, and the highlight was Councilmember Manalo's baby was with Elvis, singing and dancing. So, I think that Ethan was a big hit with the grandmothers and with everybody, which is adorable. It was a great day, and we all had fun. If anybody would like to add anything, please do.
Okay, any other City Council Reports? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We had Congresswoman Jackie Speer come to City Hall. There was a Filipino, concerns with the Filipino community right here at City Hall. So, basically, Congresswoman opened the floor to any topic and any question, so it was really an opportunity to ask her directly about any concerns. And so, that happened two weeks ago, or, or last weekend.
Great. Any others? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I already closed my laptop, but there is one, let's see, Flight to Denver. Oh, no, not that one. Just wanted to let everyone know that a good friend of mine who I used to work with retired from the San Francisco Police Department as a deputy chief. And he was just sworn in, and the first time ever of the police chief now of Broadmoor. Name is Michael Conley, so just wanted to let folks know about that. And in further comments, I see in the audience, we have the Boy Scouts of America. They've attended numerous times to our council meeting. I'd like to thank the troop master who's always bringing them here so that they understand what government and how government works. Welcome.
Dr. Rod?
Well, I had the, the privilege as a father to accompany her and my family to New York City. And I was, yeah, New York City. And I just want to give a big shout-out to the Westlake School of Performing Arts. They performed and competed at the New York City Dance Alliance, and I would say a lot of them have placed in the top 20 in the nation as top dancers. My daughter was in top 25, so shout-out to my daughter, Amiana. And their, their mini group actually won Most Outstanding Critical Choice Award for their performance called "Hello." My goddaughter placed top five amongst teens. And the other people that beat her are the people that are on TV, so like World of Dance, and, and they had like one of the top hip-hop performances as well. Doing a shout-out to, it was called "That Boy for Life," and it was a tribute to those New York City and New York City hip-hop and the notorious B.I.G. So, I would go down the list, but I'll probably just give it up to like Charlie or something, put on the, on the, yeah, on the monthly, we call it, newsletter. Just want to give a shout-out to the Westlake School of Performing Arts.
Excellent, excellent. Any other City Council Reports? No? All right, how about?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
For the record, it was just a joke when I said New York City. But if Dr. Rod Dasmagboal were much older, he, whenever you hear somebody say "New York City," that means like barbecue sauce.
Pecante.
Pace, Pecante.
Pace, Pecante sauce.
We're dating ourselves, yeah.
New York City.
Good. Okay, how about Staff Report? Any Staff Report? No, all right. So, we have several adjourned memories. Let me hand it over to Mr. Sylvester first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My adjourned memory is this evening, a lady who used to live next door to me and used to see my kids and watch over them, and now my kids are adults, 40 years old. And it's those little things that you don't forget. So, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Nanai Adelina Reyes Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let me also adjourn in memory of Ramona Andrade Cachuela, who is Daly City Arts and Culture Commissioner, Dori Panissa's mother, who died at the age of 100 years old and 10 months at Mission Hospital in Iloilo City. Also like to adjourn in memory of Raquel Lippi, who is Anthony Gerace, Senior Water, Wastewater Operator's Mother-in-Law. With that, we would like to adjourn in their memories. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.